Welcome to the November 6, 2024, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please call, roll.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Steve Chappell from Coastline Baptist Church. Pastor Chappell?
Let's pray. Our Father, we are thankful for this incredible place we get to call home. We thank you for Oceanside. We thank you for our civic leaders and for all they do and all they give for the benefit of the rest of us. And we pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment and insight. And we ask, Lord, that tomorrow our city would be a little bit better for work done in this room tonight. And Father, we thank you that we live in a nation that grants us the freedom to have a voice that is heard by way of the ballot box. And with votes still being counted in many places, we pray that your will would be done and that the transition over the weeks and months to come would be marked by grace and peace and humility. And God, I pray you'd help us to love others as you have loved us. We ask this prayer in the name that is above all names, the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, please. And tonight, we have one proclamation. It's our annual November proclamation, which is in honor of National Native American Heritage Month. So we, tonight, we have Captain Mel Vernon of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians and friends. So Mel will be introducing everyone. Easier on me. But this is a very important proclamation. How are you doing? Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Diana. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Christina.
Hi. Oh, thank you.
We all get, we all get to hug here. So let me go ahead and do the proclamation and then hand the mic over to Captain Vernon. Whereas, like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with the history and culture of Native American and indigenous peoples. And whereas, we acknowledge Bayum Kawichum. Kawichum. Bayum Kawichum. Close. The people of the West have called the North San Diego County and Camp Pelton Region "home" for more than 10,000 years. And today, known as the Lucesneo people, are represented by seven bands and tribes. And they are La Jolla, Palma, Palma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Ceboba. And whereas, the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, the customs and traditions of Native Americans are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States and our city of Oceanside. And whereas, evidence of tribal cultural resources found throughout our region prove that the Lucesneos have a long history and a rich culture that existed before first European contact, arrival of the Spanish missionaries, Mexican rule, and the establishment of the United States. And the Lucesneos have survived every challenge, generation after generation, adapting to meet changing times and circumstances with great optimism. And may I say, grace. And whereas, we celebrate our commitments to respect and preserve the rich Native American history and traditions in our city of Oceanside. And whereas, the most sacred responsibility of Lucesneo people is to preserve and protect their ancestral territory. And the city of Oceanside has been an exceptional partner to the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians in a unified commitment to honor and protect historical and cultural sites. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside do hereby proclaim November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Oceanside, continuing our commitment to work with the San Luis Rey Band Tribe in the preservation of our shared cultural heritage. I urge all residents and visitors to observe this month by enjoying Native American heritage programs, ceremonies, and activities, including the Spirit of the Valley, Ki'icha Nights Coyote Dreams, which is on November 16th, Saturday, November 16th, celebrating the arts and culture of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. That, that event will be 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Heritage Park, Oceanside. Is, is it the third or fourth annual now? Fourth annual. Please come on down. Yes, we've got Studio Ace in the house, too. Yes. So this is a phenomenal, phenomenal ceremonial acknowledgement of our heritage and our tribe here, our local tribe with the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. Thank you so much for, for being here and for being our partners as we continue the preservation of these resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. It's, it's an honor to be here and to accept this proclamation. We've been doing it for a number of years, but it's, it's very special to us because I think we're one of the few tribal groups that actually gets to do this ceremony. And it's nice to have Oceanside as being a, a partner in the community that we're a part of and have been for quite a while. I do have some, Esther, I do have some gifts we'll pass out when you get about coming to the Ki'icha Nights Coyote Dreams, Spirit of the Valley. And, yeah, there you go. And it helps for us to share our culture there. My sister's making baskets and given a basket class so you can make, make your own basket and walk away. We have some flute playing going on, some storytelling, and some drums will be there, some dancers. And it just looks forward to a, a really going to be an exciting time coming up. And that helps us. And we're going to have fry bread there, too. The other part of that's. Yes. And this line's going to be a lot smaller than the one at the Pow Wow. Yeah, so we'll get there within, within a day. So that being said, I appreciate it so much. And I will pass the mic down because to pass everyone to share their names, if they would like.
I thought you were good. I gave the mic.
Miuyam Notoong Diana Cordell Lucesneo. My name is Diana Cordell, and I'm from the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. And I want a basket weaver also and retired. So if you do come, you know, you will be able to make your own basket. And please come.
And she is with the California Basket Weavers Association, a very, very important part of this statewide organization. And I mean, they go out and they, well, say what you do. You, you collect?
Okay, I, I'm on the board for the California Indian Basket Weavers Association. I've been on the board for over 17 years now. And we were invited to visit California at the Visit Oceanside there, at the Seaport this past time. We had a table there. We promote basket weaving throughout the state of California and throughout the United States to keep our tradition and our cultures going. You've got to think that there's 243 tribes here in the state of California. So we try to keep the traditions and culture going. Thank you.
Including gathering, right?
Oh, we have a gathering, too, once a year. I know, we, we do see, we put on a gathering. It's going on its 34th year next year. And we do come in, about 400 different weavers come in, and we, and we promote about 36 of them throughout the state. So we have Southern weavers, Central weavers, and Northern weavers. And you can see the different cultures and the different techniques, what they use. When we do our traditional baskets, we just don't buy the material. We have to go out into the forest, private lands, et cetera, to gather our materials. And each region uses different type of materials. Here in Southern California, we have a really hard time getting our materials because a lot of it's on private property. And so we have to work with, with the U.S. Forest Service, counties, state parks, et cetera, and even landowners to get our materials. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and actually, we're working as a partnership with respect to the, to the lagoon, the Buena Vista Lagoon, in trying to see if we can grow locally these, these materials that, in fact, were a part of this whole tradition here in Oceanside. And names?
Miuyam Notoon Trent Moran. Hi, everybody. It's an honor to still be here. And I just wanted to say thank you to Esther here for still doing this. Appreciate it.
My name is Christina Anaya, and these are my daughters, Grace and Faith. And thank you for allowing us to be here.
I'm Carol Hernandez. Can we do the fry bread?
She does fry bread. Oh, very important person here.
Yes.
It's a very wavy recipe.
Hi, I'm Justine Lunabo. I am Lucesneo, and I also make fry bread thousands. Thank you, Esther, Oceanside Council, for giving us this proclamation. It's very honorable to us. We do appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Allison Beltran. I'm the daughter of Tom and Kelly Beltran and the granddaughter of Mary Lou and Frederick Beltran. And I just want to say thank you for today.
Miuyam, I'm Rainette Angiano. And thank you for having us. And I will be there at the event as well with jewelry. So all the beaded jewelry that will be at our vendor's booth will be made just by San Luis Rey tribal members.
She's going to be teaching. I, I am really bad at that. But I got, I did one, a small basket. But hey, if I can do it, you all can do it. Please come. It's interesting how you need to wet the, is it, you call it the reeds? In order to make it pliable. Yeah, whatever. But anyway, thank you so much. Please come. Oh, one more thing.
I heard the word ki'icha go by, and people probably don't know what a ki'icha is. A ki'icha is the home, the traditional home of Lucesneo people. And we're going to have a ki'icha built there so the kids can go in there. And that'd be by Marlene and, and PJ Fosselman. And they've been, put a lot of effort out there. They've been going to Rancho Gohomi and Buena Vista, cutting the tulie to actually make this thing together. So it's, you know, that's going to be, we're going to walk in it and have that experience. Thank you so much.
As tall as you.
So these are our heritage traditions. So please come on down. Picture time. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and for continuing your traditions here in Oceanside. Yes. Yes, isn't that great?
Okay, here. How about your, your, so I can be put near her? That's good.
One more. Wait, 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 one more. One more. Over there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a closed session report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council did meet at 3:30 this afternoon in closed session regarding item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on status of negotiations previously authorized in open session. Specific reference to OCEA, Oceanside City Employees Association. There was deliberation and direction provided to staff, but no reportable action under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next, our, our consent calendar items, items two through 12. Have any members of the public requested any of them to be polled?
We have received no requests.
All right. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
There's a motion in a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. So we're on to item 15. That's communications for the public regarding items not on this agenda. How many do we have?
We have three speakers under that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was, there is a general item. My apologies. Item number 13. Sorry, you got up. It's like, okay, I must have missed something. Item number 13, before we go to the comments from the public on items not on the agenda, is a general item, and it is, "Staff recommends that the city council approve Amendment Number Three to the Property Use Agreement with the San Diego Rescue Mission to lease the Oceanside Navigation Center Shelter located at 3131 Oceanside Boulevard, extending the term for one year for the purpose of operating a 50-bed facility for the unsheltered, and authorize city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of the supporting documents." So we have a report by Ms. Vicky Gutierrez, a real estate manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Vicky Gutierrez, Real Estate Manager for the Public Works Department, Property Management Division. The mayor just introduced the item. I'll get right started. Staff is recommending that the city council approve Amendment Three to the Property Use Agreement with the San Diego Rescue Mission to lease the Oceanside Navigation Center Shelter at 3131 Oceanside Boulevard and to extend the lease for one-year term for the purpose of operating the 50-bed facility for the unsheltered. And we ask for authorization of the city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of all supporting documents. So on November 17, 2021, the city council approved the property use agreement for a three-year term with the San Diego Rescue Mission, again, called the Oceanside.
Could I just stop you for a second? So the screens are not showing. Is there a reason?
We have, we have notified IT about that issue.
Okay. So it's not something you can fix right there?
No, no.
Okay. What happened to the magic? Go ahead.
There's a PowerPoint hopefully at your desktop. So, okay, great. Do you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Okay, so they, they operate as the Oceanside Navigation Center at this time, and they're at Throughman Through and Oceanside Boulevard. The agreement was for use and operation of a 50-bed housing navigation center and to address the individual needs for individual families and for experiencing homelessness in Oceanside. The agreement was amended twice due to unanticipated increases in the development and construction costs for the facility, which were largely due to changes in the scope of work, material supplies, equipment and labor. And it resulted in a delay of completion of the facility, which opened in August, August 17, actually, of 2023. And it's as the city's first year-round homeless shelter. The three-year term of the agreement commenced when the city council approved the agreement, and, and that was not the facility date. So we just wanted to make sure you knew that that was not the facility opening date. The San Diego Rescue Mission is requesting to extend the term for one year and to change their name to the North County Lighthouse from the Navigation Center. And currently, the property use agreement governs the use of the agreement, and it also governs the operations provided by San Diego Rescue Mission. So we are, after being in, open for about a year, staff has realized that it makes sense to split the two agreements. So we'll be coming back, hopefully, in, we're planning on in December of this year or January of 2025, and we'll bring a separate operations agreement and a separate property use agreement, which will make the most sense for us. I'd like to show you on the screen. You'll see, and this is the site plan for the navigation. We call the whole thing the Navigation Center. The middle yellow outline is where the actual Navigation Center Shelter is located. It shares the property with our code enforcement team building and also a, an Oceanside Police Department and the Small Training Center. In addition, if you look to the right of the map, there's a temporary parking lot that is a separate property the city purchased a few years ago. And that is being used as a temporary parking lot for the shelter as they have a lot of people within the shelter that have cars. In addition, I want to point out, too, that the agreement currently provides for a termination provision by either party that we can terminate with a 90-day advance written notice. And the agreement also has a one-year, after we, if this, if today's extension is approved, we have one existing one-year option to extend if the city chooses to do so. So some of the compliments over the past year are the following. We took, we provided shelter to 508 people with 282 individuals transitioning with positive exits. And that means they entered, they exited into an appropriate program or to a permanent housing. We provided, this shelter provided services to some of the most vulnerable unsheltered, including 44 veterans, 41 children, and 58 victims of domestic violence. The shelter is intended as an immediate solution to assist in transitioning individuals to permanent housing, resources, or other appropriate housing or solutions in the community. And the success of the program is due to collaboration with the community service providers who are on campus each week. And they have over 200 volunteers who serve on campus daily within the shelter to help it become successful. And again, all services provided by the facility are focused on supporting an individual to access permanent or other appropriate housing as quickly as possible. One last picture. These are some pictures from inside the shelter. You'll see some pictures of one of the bedroom areas, the kitchen. There's a computer room and just give you a little glimpse of what it looks like. So this fiscal impact for this project is the city considers the programs provided by the Rescue Mission a value of approximately $1 million annually as valuable consideration. And these services constitute the payment for the facility during the amendment term. The city does assume full responsibility for all costs associated as it relates to maintenance and utilities of the facility. And all that can be found in the staff report. So staff recommends that the city council approve Amendment Number Three to the Property Use Agreement with the Rescue Mission for lease of the Navigation Center Shelter at 3131 Oceanside Boulevard, extend the lease for one-year term for the purpose of operating the 50-bed shelter, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of all supporting documents. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. I also have Leilani Heinz is present to answer any questions that may be specific to the operations of the Navigation Center itself.
Thank you very much. And can I ask staff? It says, "Commission or committee report does not apply." Doesn't the Housing Commission address homeless, variety of homeless issues? Do they not make recommendations to the council on housing and homeless issues?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Yes, the Housing Commission does deal and considers issues related to homeless services. Since this contract did go before the commission a while ago in its full term, the three-year term plus the two extensions, and that was approved by the Housing Commission, I think it was determined that it didn't necessarily need to go back to them for approval or a recommendation to council.
Okay, but you are going to bring it forward?
In terms of the, the split of the operation agreement? Yes, likely we will do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any, any requests to speak for the public?
We have one from Jimmy Knott.
Mr. Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. Before you really consider this, there's also other issues that I think need to be defined. You've had the police come before you and bring issues, and you've had questions. And the questions of, about referrals. Who can refer? There is also questions from the public. Like as an example, myself today, driving in to tonight's meeting, I saw someone sleeping out in front of a couple of businesses down the South Oceanside area. They had all their possessions into a cart, but they were sleeping behind a bush. How would a citizen like myself make a recommendation to go to the facility? There is also the question is, when you saw the pictures of it, it was really bland. It was really naked on the wall. It was really, I would not say unwelcoming, but not, it needed to be more welcoming. If there was a child that was there, I would wonder, because it was pretty well sterile. I think there needs to be some adjustment in that. Also, the question has, as well, is the quality and review of the status. This was not brought up tonight. And report back to you as representative of the people on the conditions that would take and need to be brought back if there are concern. I think that would be important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a, a request for an extension for one year, per the agreement. This is a request for an extension for one year per the agreement, and I do believe that the referrals are from OPD, the HOT team, Housing Authority, any other referrals?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, including some of our partner agencies as well. And to Mr. Knott's concerns, those are the types of questions that we want to clarify and spell out explicitly in the operational agreement, which you will have a chance to review to, so those answers will be specifically addressed through that process.
Right, and the presentation did say that that would be at a later time.
Yes.
So, specific questions related to the operations. Okay. And I do have one more question. I know that we are very focused on ensuring that this is, that we are addressing Oceanside, our homeless folks in Oceanside, and I am concerned, Oceanside Lighthouse would be fine, but to say North County suggests that it is, you know, more of a regional, and I am concerned about that. So I would be actually making a motion for approval, except to change the name to eliminate the regional suggestion of North County and instead put in Oceanside. That would be, okay. So that's a motion in second. It should be fine, right? Yeah. Councilmember Weiss? Okay. All right. There's a motion in second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, and now we are on item number 15, communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda.
And we have three speakers. Our first speaker is Eric Marenberg, to be followed by Richard Newton.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Sanchez. I'm with San Diego Running Company with the Oseid Turkey Trot. Here just to remind everyone, we are in November, a couple of weeks away, so this is going to be the 19th Annual Oseid Turkey Trot. We're expecting well over 8,000 participants. Last year, we saw over 40 states represented and six countries. This is a tremendous event. We have tremendous support from the city for this event, and everything's coming together. Have a great, great Thanksgiving morning. We do expect to have potentially a sell-out crowd with all the items that we purchased in advance, so we'll start to blanket the community with materials to market, so let families and friends know to come sign up and join us for the 19th Annual Oseid Turkey Trot.
Thank you very much. So no more costumes of a turkey or...
I'm not here for the turkey trot, I'm here for the lives of turkeys out there.
Okay, thank you. Richard Newton.
Tonight, on off-agenda comment, I'd like to speak about the landslide victory of President Donald Trump and the Republican platform. Perhaps that is a misstatement, for the landslide was merely a symptom of, or rather the result of, the insanely inept policies promoted by the Democrat Party writ large, culminating in the current Biden administration. But Democrat policies, for a change, hurt the Democrats themselves rather than the country. The electoral failure of the inept Kamala Harris was predictable, given that she was chosen by Biden as a vice president merely because she was black and a female. She was brought on for identity politics, not competency. Glad that one bit the Democrats in their own ass. Biden himself was inept and installed via a coup and supported by lies and gaslighting to the American people. So what were some of these inept policies? One, trans mania. The Democrats were delusional enough to think that someone can change their gender by decree and push that on everyone else to bear, despite the obvious truth. Imagine that, per the Democrats, I could stand here and say I'm a 10-year-old girl, and everyone else has to comply with my delusion. Two, immigration and open borders. An invasion is a wave of foreigners entering a country and extracting its resources. Illegal aliens under Democrat administrations are given cash, shelter, medical care, and other benefits paid for by the American taxpayer. Democrats have served as an advance guard to these invaders, opening our borders, refusing to deport them, discontinuing President Trump's Remain in Mexico policy, protecting illegal aliens from prosecution for the crimes they've committed, and then extracting taxpayer resources to fund these invaders. Yes, the Democrats have served as an advance guard for this invasion. I feel the Democrats are a party of traitors who assist invaders and criminals. Shame on you. Reckless fiscal policies, number three, and Orwellian gaslighting of the American people with titles like the Inflation Reduction Act, which actually ignited inflation with runaway spending. Four, lawfare. Most appalling of all is the fascist policies of the Democrats to weaponize the legal system against political opponents, starting with the Obama administration and the IRS, to the Biden administration and the partisan and corrupt Attorney General Merrick Garland, whose Department of Justice finds the tiniest infraction to implement the heaviest charges against political opponents. The Democrats deserve to lose. Hell, I think the Democrats should be prosecuted for their crimes, treason, and corruption. But we are blessed here tonight with, to have two members of the Democrat Party Central Committee, essentially the Board of Directors of the County Democrat Party, Mayor Sanchez and Councilmember Joyce. Perhaps they can defend their party against these assertions, and I challenge them to do so without gaslighting or lies. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, Council Members, Jimmy Knott. I want to take over a moment here and thank everybody that ran for office. I've run in the past, and I know that it takes a lot of guts to stand up, put yourself out there, and say, you know, I want to take and help you. And I want to say to every one of you that has run, thank you. Thank you very much. What happens is, is that right now, we know that the election is not really over. There's about 20, 30,000 roughly votes that have to be resolved, counted. Nothing is really settled yet here in Oceanside. Maybe one office. We know that Prop X has passed pretty well, and thank you. That means we get potholes filled, so I want to thank the public for that. At least we won't have potholes. So, hopefully. But I also want to take a moment here, and with all due respect to Mr. Richard, but Jesus Christ was, if you read your scriptures, when Herod took in, was in charge of Israel, that area, if you remember, his mother and father escaped from certain death into Egypt. They did not go through inspection. There was not a wall into Egypt, but they lived there as foreigners into a great land. They were not kicked out. They were welcome. They were cared for. This is something that we need to consider, is how great our Savior was taking care of as a stranger in a strange land. And it's something that's very humbling, that we have to think about something like that. And as much as I may have some problems with some malvalent individuals, I think that majority of the people that do come to our country are an asset and not asses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go, we're going to go ahead and take a break until 6 o'clock. During this break, I understand the problem will be fixed with video.
I believe they need about 10 minutes to fix the issue.
Well, we only have one item left, so. Yeah, we can do that at the end. Thanks. So until 6 o'clock, and we'll take up the item number 14. Okay, we're going to go ahead and restart the meeting. We do have a 6 o'clock time certain public hearing item. That is item number 14. Staff recommends that the City Council, acting as the legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2001-1 of the City of Oceanside, known as Moro Hills Development, and the Board of Directors of the Oceanside Public Financing Authority, known as The Authority, adopt resolutions authorizing the issuance of local agency revenue refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $11 million, and approving certain documents and taking certain other actions in connection therewith. And this does involve a property that we know as Arrowood. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from Council Members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff only.
No, no contact. All right. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and begin testimony by Jill Moya, our city's financial services director, and I understand this is really to take advantage of lower interest rates that will benefit the homeowners.
That is correct.
Right.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director, and I'm here tonight to present item number 14, Local Agency Revenue Refunding Bonds for Moro Hill, or also known as Arrow. Tonight, staff is recommending that City Council conduct a public hearing, adopt the resolutions authorizing the issuance of local agency revenue refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $11 million, and approve other documents such as the preliminary official statement, bond purchase agreements, bond indentures, and escrow agreements. Refunding these bonds would generate an estimated savings of $344 per year for most of the Arrowood property owners. The Moro Hills Community Facilities District was formed in 2001. The initial bonds were issued in 2002 and 2004, and they were refinanced in 2013 and There are three series that are currently outstanding. These outstanding bonds can be paid off at any time at no extra cost. Staff is requesting authorization to issue 2024 bonds to refund the prior CFD and improvement area bonds for interest rate savings. These bonds received an A-plus rating by S&amp;P. The 2024 bonds would be issued with a par amount not to exceed $11 million and a minimum net present value savings of 3%. These savings would benefit Arrowood property owners through the reduction in CFD taxes. The estimated savings for Arrowood property owners, subject to both the CFD and improvement area taxes, is $344 per year. Financial market has increased due to recent current events, so staff is monitoring the market and will only move ahead with the refunding when the market supports a minimum 3% net present value savings. In conclusion, if approved by City Council and market conditions support a 3% net present value savings, the finance team will post the preliminary official statement, and then the 2024 bonds will be priced and settled. That concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have, along with the city's Bond Council, Brian Forbath from Stradling, and the city's municipal financial advisor, Brian Michael Bush from Urban Futures.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to specifically address this issue. Did anyone sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we had one speaker, Jimmy Knott.
Okay. Go ahead and rise and approach the podium.
Pass.
Oh, you passed, okay. You do not have to have signed up. If you want to speak on this item, you can go ahead, rise, approach the podium, state your name, and speak for up to three minutes. I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And no questions, so I'm just going straight to the council. Is there a motion to adopt resolutions and agreements?
Question.
Oh, Councilmember Weiss.
Just one question. So we are not extending the maturity date. This is just refinancing for a lower interest rate.
Correct.
Then I move approval.
No change in the term.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion in second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for fixing the screens. This is a time for general council member comments. Any comments? Councilmember Weiss?
I just wanted to expand just a little bit on the turkey trot issue. You don't have to be a runner. You can be a walker. You can come with kids. You can come in costume, and just remember, move your feet before you eat. So come down to the turkey trot.
And you can come with a stroller. And your pet dog, yes. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. That was the best commercial I think I've ever heard. Just since our last meeting, a couple of things. I wanted to let the public know that I attended on Tuesday, October 29. NCTD had their groundbreaking for their hydrogen fueling station at their bus ops center off of Villa Del Norte. And what's significant about that is, North County Transit District moves forward in new bus modalities, is this is, in San Diego County, this is the first hydrogen, they were the first public transportation agency to move forward with hydrogen-fueled buses. So they've taken on a fleet of battery-powered buses, and they've got, already have hydrogen buses ready to go, and it was quite a nice event. And then on Saturday, November 2, I was fortunate enough to go to the Solutions for Change Gala that was held in Escondido. And Solutions for Change is an organization that works with homeless and drug-addicted and people that are really trying to make a change in their life, and it's a really good program. And one of the things that they did talk about is that they're now going to be operating out of Green Oak Ranch, which, in Vista, which is a real boom for Solutions for Change and their ability to serve more people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Joyce.
I had the opportunity last week to speak at the Interfaith Annual Gathering, and I just wanted to say how amazing that event was. We have so many employees from Interfaith that work with our city staff to provide solutions to homelessness and solve many of our social issues in the city. So it was really good to hear more about their impact that they have across the North County region, and also just to say thank you alongside some of the other electeds in North County. Also, just a note about the elections, they were beautiful, they were free and fair. In fact, we had long lines at lots of the ballot stations, the voting centers, on Tuesday evening, and so I'm going to be doing what I can to advocate to the county, to see what we can do to make that better. We had people standing in line for over an hour, and I've not seen that. It's also obviously a barrier to voting for folks in our city, so do what we can, but thank you, everybody, for weighing in.
Thank you. And this coming Monday, November 11, is Veterans Day, so in your own way, please observe this very important day. Growing up here in Oceanside, living with veterans' families, and having, go on, just go to school with military brats, that's what they call themselves, has been a really unique experience that I've had, so hopefully you will be able to observe that day. And the next council meeting day is November 20, so we are adjourning to November 20, 3:30 p.m. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.